Good morning. It is June 21, 2022. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the prayer of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a motion to adopt today's agenda. So second, move to secondary market. Hi, Hazel, hi. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone would like to make public comment, step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment number one and move to the 2022 insurance review. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for placing us on the agenda today to provide an overview of your 2022, 2023 insurance renewal. Appreciate that opportunity. I'm joined today, I'm Steve Good, you with Nap to Desk Insurance, joined by Andrew Rickles and Susan Huster, who's behind us. And we've got about nine.
Bring a chair up.
I've got, we've got about nine or 10 slides to walk through. I believe you've got the presentation in front of you and we'll ask Bryce to advance them as we go through them. It'll take us maybe nine or 10 minutes to do that, and then we'll be happy to take some questions about the renewal. So with that, I'll let Andrew take the first.
You go to the first slide again. Steve mentioned, my name is Andrew Rickles with Nap to Desk. What we're going to go over first is just kind of some claims history, this kind of historical as well as the most recent year. On the first slide we have up there is just your number of paid work comp claims going back five, actually six years. You'll notice the most recent year, we had 17 paid claims, which was up from last year. But again, last year, as you all know, there wasn't, it wasn't a normal year. So a lot more employees back at work. So it's kind of back to where we were in the 1920 year. Overall, still a great, great number, lower number of paid claims in the past year. Flip the slide. So here's the dollar amount incurred. If you change the slide, it'd be good. So there's a dollar amount incurred last year. You'll notice we did have some larger payments this last year on work comp claims. Take a step back, as you meant, work comp claims is really what drives your work comp premiums. That's why we spent a lot of time on the work comp piece of this, because the more claims you have, the more dollar that's paid, the larger your premiums are. But again, overall, this, we had a rough year this last year with work comp claims, but the three previous years were absolutely outstanding. Again, going back six years here, overall, no worries, no issues, but again, just a snapshot of where we sit for work comp claims. Okay, switch the slide here. Here's the best slide you will see today. Your work comp experience mod is .60. That means you're getting a 40% credit based off your claims history. IMWCA has 80 counties insured. It's the lowest experience mod in the 80 counties that they have on record. So that is absolutely outstanding from Story County. It is the fourth lowest of 534 members that they have insured. So again, you guys are in great, great positions. Really drives your work comp costs way down.
Includes cities and other municipalities.
Yeah. You, again, it's absolutely outstanding, .60. You got it. Yep. And again, it's, you know, the trend, you know, it's to go from the .66 to a .66. .66 is outstanding too, and then to go down to .60. I will say next year it's probably going to go up. As you, that previous slide, we had some claims this last year, so just know it's going to go up next year. I still think it's in a really good position. It'll still be well under one, but again, just know it, it's not going to go down next year because of this previous year. Any questions on that slide? Again, this is the best slide you can see today. So. Here is a quick snapshot of just paid claims other that are outside of work comp. Again, this is a five-year total. We just thought we put them all together. We've got auto liability, property and professional. I will make a quick note, that property claim, that's the Justice Center damage, I think it was a 2018, the great hail damage there, and that was about $400,000 that was paid. So that, that large number there. Other than that, auto is outstanding, paid claims on claims reserve. Liability is, it looks very good as well. We do have some in reserve there, and we do have some professional claim open as well. But again, overall, these look really, really good if you take out that large property claim. Let the slide, just again, this is a quick snapshot of this last year on work comp, kind of where the claims coming from. To kind of, we've got, you know, eye bites, slip and falls, overexertion, cuts, just to kind of give you a quick, just where are the claims coming from? There really isn't, I would say, one, this, this is pretty standard for any work comp client that we have, overexertion is always typically number one. It seems like we've got a lot of miscellaneous in there, which just could be about anything else. But again, I just wanted to show this slide, just to kind of see where they're coming from. If we saw a trend line here, we'd say, okay, we're going to focus on this. Again, your safety crew does a great job here. You guys do a good job with it. But again, just a quick snapshot of where we sit today, this last year with work comp.
Pick up from here. Here is a coverage snapshot. There's a lot more detail than what you're seeing here today. But this is a review of your property, your general liability, your auto liability, law enforcement, public officials and so on. And just would point out that we did do an analysis of all the deductible structures back in 2019. At that time, the property deductibles, $10,000, and there were significant premium savings at that time that we recommended it go to $50,000. And the board did act on that. At the time, it saved about $26,000 in premium. And so that's really the only change in deductible structure. Everything else, the other $10,000 deductibles stayed as, as is auto liability. We ensure, of course, auto liability, you self-insure the property damage on, on all of your fleet. And you've got some crime and flood insurance included. So, and then your excess liability is 13 million. We're going to talk about that when we get to cyber a little bit today. But technically, you've got 2 million and in some cases plus 13, so total of 15 million. And that's one of the benefits of being in a pool like this, is the ability to assume excess liability. Sure, yeah, yeah.
So the law enforcement liability, is that pretty, the 2 million, is that pretty standard?
Those are standard limits with, with ICAP. That's correct. And then again, the 13 will go over the top of that if you, if you exceeded that. Here's your property. We do spend a little time on this, looking at this, and we did do a review back in 2017 of all of your properties. At that time, there were about 11 properties that we thought were underinsured. ICAP retained a third party called Northwest Valuations to do a review, and we did increase about 11 properties at that time. So what you see here today is just a little over $60 million in buildings. Those did increase, I think it was about 8% historically. It's been about, excuse me, it's increased 6% historically. It's been about 4%. So many of our carriers, including ICAP, are taking billing values up more than they have historically because of the increased cost of labor, materials. We think that's a very fair thing to do in today's current building environment. So 60 million, up 6% from last year. Personal property is furniture, fixtures, equipment, and all computer equipment, not currently leased. The leased equipment is right below that, $313,000, and any other leased equipment. Fine arts would be any public art, the cannon on the front lawn, things of that nature would fall into fine arts, any, any artwork. Miscellaneous property scheduled would be road graders, motors, loaders, a lot of sheriff's equipment would fall under that 6.9 million. And then there's a miscellaneous equipment, anything under $10,000, we don't schedule. A lot of tools, a lot of miscellaneous equipment in that 779,000. So total insured value, 74.4 million. You see what your insured value was the prior year, which again, the bulk of that increase was in your property. So it gives you kind of a quick, quick summary of that. And then Supervisor Mark, and you asked me a question at the end of a luncheon that I think Latifah spoke at. It was a state of the community luncheon. You asked me about cyber, and I think that that day, someone from DMAC had spoke about a major cyber attack that they had incurred. And maybe, I don't know, at least I think you were there as well. And so, and I thought it was interesting, we heard a little bit about that DMAC situation, which was very unfortunate. And so you'd asked me, what do we have? And I think I responded in email that day, but thought perhaps today we'd spend just a little more time, I'd tell you what we have. This is the hottest issue in our industry today is cyber, and you can't pick up a, you know, an app and read about anything without seeing cyber. And so there's really two pieces to cyber. There's what's called cyber liability, which covers any financial losses that result from those, those data breaches. And you really have full policy limits for that. You've got the $2 million per covered event and 13 million of access coverage, which takes you to 15 million. That's as good as you're probably going to get on any, in any market today. We've got other municipalities and school districts and others that would probably like to have $15 million in coverage. You've got that for any financial losses. And then the second piece you have is what's called cyber breach. And that's the response cost, if you will, to notify taxpayers or others that have been impacted as a result of a breach. And that's 250,000, and that's an aggregate. So that covers any credit monitoring that you would need to provide to taxpayers or others that maybe have been impacted by that. And that's fairly common. I think there've been some other cyber breaches in central Iowa, and as if those have occurred, they've offered credit monitoring. We've got clients in the same case. If you had to restore any of that, that data, if you will, even though you're backed up in the cloud most likely, but if you had to do any restoration, you would have that, that cost covered as well. Any extortion, any expenses and loss of money as a result of that. And that's a fairly low limit at 250,000, but that's, that's the, as far as ICAP will go at this point. And then cyber crime, any fraud loss, any bank or credit card losses, many cases, those bank or credit card companies will pick up, support you and pick up that loss. But if there were any, any additional losses beyond that, or any telecommunications or phishing fraud, you've got coverage there as well. So those are really the four primary coverages under cyber breach. It's $250,000. There are higher limits. I asked the ICAP underwriter, I said, do some cities and counties have higher limits than that? And, and the answer was yes. But I think today, this is acceptable. What, what you would need to do is have full multi-factor authentication. That's a fairly common term today. And if you had full MFA for remote users and others utilizing Story County services or IT services, then we could look at higher, higher, higher limits on that bottom cyber breach portion.
And just about. Our IT department is working on implementing that.
Good, terrific.
And the rates for cyber right now, as you can imagine, are, the market's just tough. I mean, there's, there's limiters, there's less and less markets out there. The ones that are in it to do a good job, they, they're getting the rate for it because of the plans they've had in the past three or five years. The whole Russia thing to change, to change the game as well in that market.
You said through our firm insurance, we had the multi-factor authentication.
Yep.
We could get.
Well, that's, that's a good question. We will go take it to market and, and see, yes. We've been renewing some other cyber policies, and they, they've been about anywhere between $10,000 to $20,000, a million. So, so let's say we took that 250 up to a million dollars, you might, assuming the carrier was comfortable with your MFA practices and all your other IT practices. It's hard to say, Linda, but you know, we might be looking at another 15 or $20,000 to get it up to a million dollars.
And ICAP won't increase their limits.
ICAP is done.
Maximum they'll allow. So we have to put a separate market to get higher, higher limits.
We would have to look at, yeah. And if the IT department is doing that, that's great to know. Latifah, when that is done, we, we maybe should look at it. Let's see what the costs are. I think 250 is a good starting point, but it is aggregate. So it's going to cover, it's got to cover the monitoring, the, the restoration expense. It's got to cover all that, and that'll go pretty quickly in the event that you did have whatever cyber breach. One county maybe had a cyber breach a couple of years ago. Per, per, per aggregate, per policy period.
Policy period. So you get hit twice.
Yeah, once, once.
Yeah, well, that 250,000 is not going to go.
Yeah, we should, we should look at higher.
If you get hit twice, shame on you, right?
Yes, and it happens.
It does.
Hopefully, they're doing the things that keep that from happening.
It was, Alyssa, once we know that's been fully rolled out, then we can certainly look at higher limits and bring that back to the board. It's direct, did drive a little bit of premium increases here when they added this cyber breach coverage. So you'll see. Any other questions on cyber? Last page, we always leave this to last, but you did experience some increase in your ICAP premiums this year, about 24 and a half percent. Not uncommon to most cities and counties across the, the state. And really several issues driving that. ICAP has, has seen some fairly significant losses the past couple of years, dating back to deratio in 2020. We didn't have anything here to speak of, but they did experience that in some other markets. There have been some law enforcement and public officials liability, again, not anything we're seeing here in this, this county, but there have been a fair amount of those claims across the state. Something we call social inflation, meaning higher jury verdicts, when things do end up, you know, in court. And then what did drive a little bit of premium increase here was those side of the higher property values, which I think is, is a good thing. So your, your ICAP premiums wore up a little more than what we've seen in prior years. The good news is, is that your work comp premiums went down 10%, and so it offset that ICAP increase nicely. Overall, you're at 15%, which I think, I believe, unless a budget is for appropriately, hopefully, as well. But again, just to highlight, Andrew touches on this earlier, your, your work comp premiums start at $405,479 for. You have discounts of $285,000 to give it down. That 118, 40% comes right off the top with your low mod. And then there's a, a large premium discount and a low loss rate discount as well. So you saved arguably $285,000 with the low mod in, in your loss history. And I mentioned Alyssa, we'll, we'll work to Stephanie and do an article in the, in the newsletter on that, on that good mod. So your payroll was, is, we renewed the policy this year's down just a little bit. It was 18.7 last year, it's 18.1 this year. Those are numbers Alyssa provides to us. And Latifah, you asked me a question about volunteer election officials. They are covered. They are covered by, by work comp, just in the same way that some of those die volunteers and those who are covered. So I would mention, we, you know, even though you had an increase here, we did market the property back in 2019. We took it to a couple of different carriers, and at that time, ICAP was still very competitive. We did analyze the auto and the GL rates also back in 19, in 2019, and ICAP was substantially lower at that time. And the work comp premiums, we, we couldn't touch it with any of the other carriers. They're just, IMWCA does a really, really nice job, and they're really competitive in that regard. So while we are looking at a 15% increase, we think it's, it's, it's still competitive in the marketplace. With that, I'll stop, and we'd be happy to take questions for the questions.
Thanks for the information on the side.
Certainly take that next to.
I don't have additional questions, but I do appreciate your presentation. It seems like every meeting I go to, when we're talking, you know, finances and they're all looking at cyber as well. What is their protection for, for cyber? Just here, how devastating it is, no matter how large, how small, what condition it is.
Maybe can really have an impact.
It's too bad we can't tell.
So true, yeah, so true. Other questions, Linda, the questions with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity this morning. Thank you for the ongoing relationship as well. We really, really appreciate it. Yeah.
Just a huge kudos to all of our county staff for doing such a great job. I think we could have that in the newsletter too, let people know the impact that it's had. Okay, moving on to agency reports, what is your management quarterly report?
Good morning, Keith. Well, we'll start off with our response activities. Response activities have been relatively high with events ranging from the unusual, which was a search for a floating white tank that was floating down a tributary to Ballard Creek, which turned out fortunately to be a water tank. We, we had the full spectrum of thoughts of anhydrous or propane tank, but fortunately, it was just a water tank. To the more routine, if I can put it that way, which was our response to the flash and river flooding that occurred on the 14th of June. We also experienced another fire at the Stover Story site. And as we've seen in the past, our, our firefighting resources are not adequate to put these fires out. And the response focuses on attempting to prevent the fire from spreading to other Stover material. Unfortunately, there was significant separation and the winds were in our favor on this particular fire. And we managed to keep it from spreading to the southern group of bales. Our office learned from the unfortunate events at the Cornerstone Church that there needs to be work with our dispatch agencies to develop criteria for emergency management to be notified of significant events such as this. This is important because with that early notification, it allows us to start to build a support plan for whatever event might be occurring. And if appropriate, we will reach out to the incident commander and offer our services. But in accordance with incident command doctrine, we will only deploy to the site if we are requested from the incident commander. So I'll pause there. That's our responses for this quarter. Are there any questions about those?
Have you had a chance to follow up with the, with Sheriff's Office or UTP about the, about this issue of notification for emergency management?
Melissa and I have started to, to work through and not just for active shooter events, but really develop a set of criteria and a way that it is flexible for our dispatch agencies, and we want to craft something. And we'll start working with PSAP supervisors to begin with, because as you know, we have to have quite a broad spectrum. And it, it has to be kind of like the general discussions that we had. When do you want me to wake you up at 6:00 AM? So that you're not greeted by the press as you walk out the door. We have to work with our dispatch agencies also to give them some fairly loose guidance, but a general concept. So we want to walk through that and think it through, and then we'll start engaging with, with all of the dispatch agencies.
I think that's really important.
It is, because.
I know how you found out about this.
Right, and we don't monitor our radios 24/7 at home, so we're going to have to depend on the dispatch agencies. But again, we, we need to try and quantify it so it's clear to them when to give us a call. We've always said, we prefer a call early, and we will start down the route if need be, we will go ahead. And if it gets resolved without our, our involvement, we're fine with that. It's much easier to do that than to be caught by surprise and, and the activity already a couple of hours down the road. On the preparedness side, our agency did a lot of training this last quarter, offering seven sessions focusing primarily on incident command and communications training. Feedback from the incident command training indicated that an average increase of knowledge on a scale of one to five was 1.7 steps, which was really good on that. But as I've said previously, well-trained people are far more, far more important to us than any shiny objects that you can give our agency. And this training helps us move towards that goal of having a team that we can bring together with a baseline of knowledge and an understanding and how we're all going to operate together and to adapt to the multiple unusual instances that we have. The disappointing aspect of the training was that there were plenty of empty seats for all of the training sessions, and we're going to continue to work on that in the future. On the operations side, we received the COVID-19 after action report back from the contractor. It highlighted the value of the collaboration that took between you all as jurisdictional executives as a key strength of the Story County response. For areas of improvement, they indicated the staffing levels for the agency and for our emergency operations center were too low. I'm pleased to announce that we're in the process of hiring an intern after advertising the job for six months that has very good skill sets and is very excited to work in our office, and we have the potential of keeping her for hopefully two years. So we are really excited. She's getting a criminal justice degree. She already has two years under her belt from DMAC. She's in the Iowa National Guard. She actually acted as the interim IT manager for, for a county while she was, while their IT manager was on a deployment. So lots of skill sets that we could have, and with my Air Force background, I asked her, why didn't, why didn't you go with the Air Force side? The recruiter for the Iowa National Guard, Army National Guard, was much more aggressive. And, and I should try and find out who that recruiter is that let her slip through the cracks, because she's, we're really excited to have her. On the side for our EOC, we continue to recruit our staff and train our staff for the EOC duties. As you understand, we need a team that is, has a lot of depth and a lot of diversity when it comes to response. Because during a response, we have to plan on 24/7 operations. We also have to plan on that some of our staff may either be absorbed in their day-to-day duties, or their family may have been directly impacted. So that's why we'll continue to do that recruiting, and we hope that the board supervisors, our elected officials and department heads will continue to support that effort as they have in the past. But we want to work with your folks to try and garner what we can from your staff. But more importantly, we need to, to start to get a more diversified EOC staff that, if something should be happening in Story County, that we can draw upon them. One area, last area for improvement addressed in the after action report was on education for disaster response for jurisdictional executives. And I'd like to thank you all as supervisors for your support for this type of training and your willingness to show up and participate at all of that training that we've had. And that will help us form a more seamless team when it comes time to interfacing with you when it comes to disaster. So I was there for any questions about our preparedness activities.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to make a comment about the training that we looked at. It was excellent. Every time, it's excellent. And every time I learn something new, I'm just really grateful for all the collaboration and, and other jurisdictional leaders that show up at those meetings.
And we need to, in the future, now translate that to some tabletop exercises, again, getting all the jurisdictional executives plus their staff together. And that cross-pollination that occurs during those trainings and exercises, I think, gives everybody a bit more of an awareness on what are going to be the concerns in our smaller communities versus the larger communities versus you having to account for the unincorporated areas.
Yeah, and I would have to echo what Latifah said too. You know, you take that same training over and over, but you get a different, for the people that come in that generate different thoughts or questions. We have those kind of, oh, I got a lot of it in that, that perspective. So I always find the trainings very good. I certainly learn something and think, yeah, gosh, thankful that we have this right here in our building and have the training. But then so basically run downstairs and ask you questions too.
And I'm sure that we'll continue to come up with diabolical activities in this county to make you think in a different way when it comes, because each one of these events is unique and poses you all a different challenge every time. So looking ahead, as you know, the greatest challenge for the office is the transition to the new coordinator. The candidate that we've got is highly qualified, and I expect there'll be a smooth transition without any degradation of services. With that said, though, the process of training replacement staff will take significant time, and there's a lot of workload ahead for, for the office. On the planning side, there's a new requirement to develop six new plans. These are recovery plans that are going to be in addition to all of the plans that we have to revise annually. So again, more workload. Yes, it's important to evaluate these things, but again, with finite time we have, it's, it's just going to put a little bit more pressure on the office. And we're going to work to continue to develop a structure to rapidly activate to receive and to distribute donations during large-scale disaster. This is important because we see a willingness to give, and we have the choice of either having a structure to collect those donations locally and to keep them locally, or else to see them go to other agencies. So we continue to work with United Way and MICA to develop this process and to make it so that it can be quickly activated and the messaging to go along with it. We're also working with the Red Cross to adapt our sheltering system to account for changes in Red Cross liability coverage for our rapid action teams for sheltering. They used to consider it to be almost a satellite Red Cross operation until it showed up, so they were providing us liability coverage. They have changed their position on that, and we've had conversations with those agencies that are, are Rats teams right now. And there seems to be a willingness to continue those activities and to absorb that under their own liabilities, but we won't. But we wanted to make sure that they were fully aware of the changes. This is important because sheltering from zero to four is when we first call on it until four hours out is primarily going to fall upon us because that's how long it takes the Red Cross to deploy. So these teams will be absolutely essential to us and we're pleased that those agencies are going to continue to work with us to provide those kinds of services. For my last item, I'm pleased to announce that this afternoon I'm going to be heading on down to Southeast Oak for the Governor's Volunteer Award Ceremony. Our STAR One search and rescue team, which got activated two nights ago again for a potential search and boom, they were shut off before they got fully mobilized. But their essential service that they provide to our county, to the counties around us and across the state. And it's good to see them getting recognized with this Governor's Volunteer Award. So I'll be heading on down there, try and take pictures and satisfy what Melissa always tells me to do. Get this up on our Facebook page so others can see the great work that's that's happening. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to just take a minute to personally thank Keith for all the help and support that he's given to Story County and to me in the last several years.
Appreciate that.
He's been our coordinator for 11. I've had the privilege of working with him very closely for the past three and a half. It was when Rick Sanders left board in 2019. I inherited his position on the Emergency Management Commission and inherited being chair of the commission. And that was six months into being supervisor and learned really quickly from Keith. And then moving forward, the next year we had a pandemic. And I have to admit that you had your hands full. You were working with public health, working with other people. But you always made time to talk to me when I came down to your office and said, here's the issue we have to deal with. And I can't tell you how much I appreciated that when you pulled together the the weekly meetings of jurisdictional executives. So because we realized everybody needed to stay on the same page during the pandemic and share the same information, we wouldn't always be making the same decisions, but we needed to know what the most current information was, what the newest governor's proclamation said, and how are we going to handle the issues? And I I just know that everybody in Story County who was involved in those, you know, from the Chamber of Commerce, from public health, representative, Senator and staff was in those meetings and it was it was and you kept doing that for over a year. Every week you would send out, we're going to have another meeting Thursday night. And and it was, it was, it really helped people get through something that most of us had never thought we would have to deal with. There were a lot of things that you did then that you never, you know, nobody ever heard about it. You knew all the things that your office put together to help keep this community going, to help get food to people, PPE to people when they needed it. And you've always been available in whatever the crisis is. And I just, I just can't thank you enough. I'm going to miss you a lot.
I appreciate that. And if you don't mind, I'll take a second to to thank the folks that I've had to work with. And I don't think that many of our citizens have a full appreciation of our volunteer agencies, all the way from RSVP to our volunteer fire departments and EMS. And those that even if they're not volunteers, our law enforcement that are out there doing this every day. You know, I, as a veteran, I get thanked for my service. And what I think is lacking is that local thanking those folks that are out there serving to include our jurisdictional executives, especially in our smaller communities, that they're volunteers. And if we don't start coming together and if we don't start picking up some of these duties that our volunteers have been been executing, then our citizens better start to, they're going to have one or two things happen without volunteers. They're either going to pay more or else they're not going to have the services. And this needs to be identified and addressed with our citizens so that they can start to bring that together. This job has been fantastic to work with those people and that's going to, not having to learn something new every day, which this job does bring upon you. And also working with those people that I'm getting paid to be out there and they're not and they're still out there at 2:00 AM. So greatest parts of this job. I really appreciated the opportunity to to have this position.
I'd also like to let everybody know that on June 30th, which is Keith's last day of employment, Emergency Management Agency, that there's going to be a, an open house at 2:00 to 4:00 PM downstairs in the Emergency Operations Center. There will be some refreshments. It was requested there not be a formal program, but I'm sure some people will be saying some words. You might have to just put up with that.
I appreciate that.
Okay. And and I also, I guess I give out questions to comment. You talked about volunteers at the Emergency Operations Center. And I know that, you know, you primarily rely on county employees or and which is a good thing because they're people that have the knowledge and abilities to do this. But I'm kind of concerned that sometimes county employees have, when a disaster hits, they're not always available because they've got to be at their office doing this or that. I'd like to see, and I'll object to the other commissioners, but how we can get some more home tiers in and trained for the EOC.
Definitely.
Are the CICS employees going to be able to have any role? Or is that because they're going to Franklin County as an employer of record? Is that kind of not?
We've been having the discussions and we're waiting for the dust to settle on that before. But that's definitely on our radar and we've been talking with Carver on that to make sure that it's it is legal and everything on their side and that their employer understands what that commitment is.
Yeah, because they're residents of Story County, so I mean, they've done it before, so I know they would want to help. The EOC is activated again, the next time it's activated, so.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would also rule with tabletop exercises if we can find the time with people. I think the training is good. Repeating the training is good. I repeated it whenever it's that, you know, I'd go, I would go because you always learn something new or you remember something from the last time. But I think actually some exercises to kind of say, okay, now it's real. What are we going to do?
Correct.
I think that helps people feel more like, feel more competent in how they make decisions.
Much easier to do when we can hit the reset button than when you can't.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, we have consideration of minutes. We've got minutes from June 14, 2022 and June 14, 2022 campus minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the June 14, 22 minutes and the June 14, 22 campus minutes.
Second. Moving to seconded. Any discussion?
Aye.
Aye. Moving to consideration of personnel actions.
I would move approval of personnel actions as presented. Second.
Seconded. Aye.
Heads. Aye.
Aye. Consideration of claims.
I will approve of claims as presented. Second.
Will seconded. Heads. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Next, we have consent agenda. Consent agenda.
There was a question about one of the attachments.
Yeah.
Address that or raise for to address it or can you just address it?
I think I can just address it. It was number, sorry, it's number 77 under there. They did cast this after June 7th meeting when they uploaded the contract, only one page for some reason uploaded the entire contract. So folks could look back at the June 7th quarter call meeting minutes. But it was too late to get it, the full contract onto the agenda. This one page showed up.
That was not a different contract. That's just the same contract.
Right. It's the, it's the subject contract as a DNR.
I would move approval of consent agenda as presented.
Second. Will seconded. Worked it.
Aye.
Heads. Aye. We to public hearing items. We have first consideration of ordinance 305, amending Chapter 20 General Assistance Program, Sections 20.01, Purpose 20.02, Definitions 20.03, Eligibility for General Assistance, 20.05 General Assistance Application, 20.06 Review by the Board, and 20.07 Appeal of the Story County Code of Ordinances. Good morning, Erin.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Erin.
Okay, very good. That was a mouthful, Latifah, all those things. So yes, we are going to start with ordinance number 305. We publicized this on the 16th of June in the Ames Tribune, the Nevada Journal, the Tri-County Times, and we have not received any comments to date. The changes in the ordinance, there's basically two major changes and that is changing the the wording of community services to general assistance. And then we also added the definition of poor as it is stated in the Iowa Code 252.1. That is something that we didn't have in there before. And then we also altered our definition of needy to also coincide with what's in 252.1. And I, for this document, those are the, those are basically the major changes. Are there any questions?
So it does look like a lot of it was because the ICS is separating that here just setting it so that it's just for our general assistance for Story County general assistance. My one question is regarding having poor defined. Were you already meeting the needs of that population? And you just didn't have it in code? So now you're moving forward adding it in code. I'm just wondering why it's, I'm not against it. I'm just seeing clarification on that.
Right. So yes, it is something we have been doing for years. It's a very small, small population. It encompasses, as you'll see in the GA manual, when we go through that, it helps with meeting the needs of homeless individuals if we need to. And then also our SSI interim program.
Just sounds like you're making the two consistent then.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we will open public hearing if anyone would like to comment. Feel free to step forward to the table or raise your hand on the Zoom. I believe it's star seven if you're on. Yeah, it's not star nine. Yeah. We need like a cheat sheet because I can't remember. Star seven, star six, star nine. We did have one when we got here.
Yeah.
Having weekly meetings. Okay, seeing no one coming forward to make public comments, we will close the public hearing. Take the motion if you're ready. I'll make a motion to approve set ordinance number 305. First consideration and set second consideration for June 28. Second. Will seconded. Heads. Aye. Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have discussion and consideration of Resolution 22-96, amending the General Assistance Manual.
Okay, great. This one we posted on our website on February, February, good grief, June 15th. And we haven't received any comments on this either. So throughout this document as well, we changed on community services to general assistance. So that's the bulk of it. When we get to this eligibility, Section C, you'll see that there's, I'm going to take you through all these things we crossed out. We did change some things, you know, due to redundancy and move some things around. So the first thing under number one, that exhausts the resources of those persons, that was actually removed from Chapter 252 and repealed. So so we took that out of there to match that. The job search, number two, number three, under there, and available work, we moved that to our employee search section of the manual. So it's over there. And then number four, complete an application is redundant to what we say in Section C above. Okay, so if we go down here to number three in the red, we moved this just from another section. We had it randomly on page five and it seemed to fit better here. Didn't change the wording or anything, just moved it. And then number four, the applicant who receives Section Eight. We actually added this. This has been a longstanding practice of ours. It's on our application and everything, but for some reason had never been in the manual. So we we put it in there. And then I think I'm going to be skipping to page four, which is Section Four Eligibility Criteria. Letter A, where it talks about location. This also refers to the Iowa Code and encompasses our homeless population. Since we have a residency requirement for our rent and utility assistance, this allows us to assist with those individuals if needed. Okay, section, page five, that's just mainly the cross-out of the thing that we moved to the to the front page. And then page six, this is where you see your definition of needy and poor, like we put in the ordinance. And we mentioned the SSI interim assistance for these individuals. And then I'm skipping ahead again for a wave. Page nine. So we, in our burial assistance, we we collect, you know, applications from funeral homes or families at the time of need. And so we added some some verbiage here about the timeframe in which we wish to receive these applications. It it really is something that we want to be able to be involved in at the very beginning so that we can have discussions with the funeral home and with the family at that time versus receiving it when everything's already been signed and done. And and then sometimes the answer is no, which is kind of rough for everyone involved. So we added that that we want to receive those, I guess, as soon as possible, if not within the first 48 hours. A lot of times we will get a phone call too, and a phone call's fine, you know, this, because sometimes this happens, obviously, on Friday afternoon, late. So a phone call is also acceptable so that we know what, you know, that something's going on. Um, page 10. Oh.
I'm sorry, Linda, I have a question on that.
Okay.
That sometimes working with the medical examiners or investigators, they have a hard time locating a next of kin.
Yes.
So sometimes that may take longer than two business days. Excuse me. Is, can you make an exception to that if there's a reason they couldn't get to you within two business days?
So correct, yes. We do have those kinds of situations that do take longer. And that's kind of why, I mean, a phone call just, you know, people know that the people passed and that they're going to be working on that. So a phone call to our office that this happened and they're trying to locate the next of kin, yes. That's successful. Yep.
Good, thanks.
Uh huh, you're welcome. Page 10, also along with the burial stuff, this is just something that has been our practice. Letter D, I think it is, and we just haven't, it hasn't been written in here. And then letter G is is our SSI interim requirements. That, you know, it's more complicated than what's in here, but this gives you the basis of what that program is and what we're looking to do to help people during that time. It has been something the county has done since I've been with the county, I mean, a long time. It just has never been in our manual. We took this opportunity to put it in there while we were doing other stuff. And then at the very end on page 11, Section Five Appeal, we just added those numbers to align with ordinance.
I have a question, Erin, under the SSI eligibility to supplement.
Yes.
So if someone who's on SSDI, would they also be eligible or is that, it's only SSI?
It's strictly, it's strictly SSI. Yes. Okay, any questions?
No, I think the adding that code section defining resident was a good, a good catch though.
Agreed.
Okay, so.
Okay, so we'll open public hearing on item two. If anyone would like to make public comment, feel free to step to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Adoption of Resolution 22.96, amending the General Assistance Manual.
Second. We'll just second it. Any further discussion? Okay. Hi. Basil, hi. Thank you, Erin.
Great, thank you. Thanks for letting me be on the computer.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to additional items. We have discussion and consideration of YSS's request to carry over $50,000 from FY22 to FY23 to fund suicide prevention program. Morning, Sandra.
Bringing a request forward from YSS to carry over $50,000 from FY22 to FY23. None of the other funders are allowing carryover this FYI or this FY. And I did advise YSS of that. Suicide prevention programming is listed as an asset priority. However, it's somewhat of a funding gray area for the county, and because of that, I did reach out to CICS to see if this was something that they would consider funding. It is something that has come up after the pandemic. It's also something that was raised as a priority with the community needs assessment and, of course, is viewed as a very important issue. However, because of that gray area, I did reach out, and CICS is looking into it. Said they would reach out to YSS to gather more information. Don't expect a decision until July or somewhere around there. So, I did make YSS aware that I would be advising the board.
Sandra, so the reasons for you reaching out to CICS is because of the changes in state law as to what the county is allowed to pay for? Would that be where it comes in that gray area?
Actually, yes, that is a reason, but prior to that, I believe it started in FY20, YSS was advised that the county shouldn't longer be paying for anything related to mental health with county dollars. And so, they.
That was a different program, but again, it was something that was mental health related.
Right, that needs to go to the region.
Yeah. So, they were advised of that back then. And each time something new comes up, we kind of find ourselves here where we have to do some additional checking just to make sure that we're not over that line.
So, we really shouldn't act on this.
That would be my recommendation.
So, maybe not act on it or not approve their request? I'm just taking clarification.
Do you want to wait to see what CICS says or do, are you pretty sure that?
No, I don't know. I was just taking clarification, excuse me, to your comment.
I wasn't saying deny it. I was saying just not take action.
Just not today and hold it for more information. That's, I'm sorry, that's what I know. I guess my question would be if CICS is not going to, it doesn't anticipate having any more information until, why? This, these are funds from FY22, so we kind of need to make a decision now, don't we?
If you're planning to approve it, the auditor's office would want information before, I believe, the 28th. So, I did advise Lisa Markley that I was bringing this forward. And I didn't know, of course, what the board's decision would be. But yes, they would want information.
Even if we denied it.
If you approved it.
Even if we denied it, though, I mean, either way, don't we need to make that decision now before the end of the fiscal year? Probably, that depends, so that they know if they can carry those funds over into fiscal year 23.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. And I guess my thought would be is, we've always been open for entities to come before the board, and since it is a gray in June, and I think they have the funding available to provide the service now, they're just seeking to carry over what they have. It'd be tend to deny it at this time, their request, but it could be presented before us at our, at a July or August meeting when we have more clarification from CICS. Is that what you're, I just want to make sure that we're all.
The carryover, the carryover has some budget implications where the auditor's office does want information this month. However, YSS and other agencies have brought requests forward without the benefit of carrying over dollars. And the board has, you know, approved some use of funds, you know, for these additional items or additional services. And I did advise YSS of that and say that that is an approach that they could consider using because they have been successful with that in the past, and the board has always expressed its openness to that. But, yeah, without carryover, YSS would still be able to bring that request forward to the board.
And does that complicate things that this is asset funding carried forward and not just?
To be consistent with what the other asset funders are doing, you know, the board often likes to be consistent with that. None of the other funders are allowing it. So, I did make YSS aware of that and that I would provide the board with that information. It just, each individual funder doesn't make that decision.
I just don't feel like this is the first, I feel like we've had this conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that if we're going to assign those funds, if we're going to assign the funds, yes, I would like to know by the end of the fiscal year, if you're just going to, as Sandra said, make a decision in August or whatever to fund that, then that's a different situation to me. If you want to assign the funds for that purpose, then I really would like to know at the end of the fiscal year.
But we're waiting for information from CICS, and I guess I'm the one to clear. There's the information we're asking from CICS. Is this a mental health service that the county cannot fund? Or is it, is CICS planning on doing this service?
Well, we're asking CICS if this is something they would or could fund. And for lack of a better rule of thumb to go by, I'm thinking that if it's something in, within CICS's area, it's probably not something that the county would want to fund. So, that's sort of how I had been looking at it.
That's the county would want to fund or that the county can't fund?
Can't fund.
That's where it comes with that. Where I was saying the changes in state law for me.
Can't fund anymore. And we're also getting this as we're closing books for FY22. And maybe we should just make a decision right now that we are not in a position to approve this.
Yeah, I mean.
We don't have the information, but we're pretty sure it was if it's that the county can't fund it.
But otherwise, we're putting forth saying, yep, we can continue to do this when there's been changes in July 1 of what the county can't fund.
Right.
No help.
And it was actually prior to the change in state law though.
No, I know that. State law, I think it's probably going to trump that come July 1. That's.
Yeah, it's not going to matter. It's not going to matter that it was carried forward at all. It's going to be, no, you can't fund it.
Right.
And that's my theory, but.
Yeah, that's how I was taking it.
It's not this word at all saying this isn't a good cause or something that needs to be done. It's just that it does not fit with our authority, right?
Right.
We're concerned it does not fit with our authority, and we're getting it near the end of the fiscal year. Not likely to have an answer from CICS.
Yeah, right. CICS is supposed to be next Thursday, but I know, no, this Thursday.
This Thursday.
But I know the CEO will not be up at the meeting, this can enable us to be up at the mental health summit all day. So, I think they're going to have even a little bit more limited agenda for this, for this particular meeting. So, probably it seems that wouldn't be until July, when it is brought up, and hopefully they would have further guidance from either CICS or the state, even as to whether it is spelled under. Mental health funding. Yeah. Or can, if it's something that the county can't fund.
I wouldn't be really surprised if we get them. I know, I said, oh, yeah, the county can fund this because it's inconsistent with everything.
I know, I agree.
So, I'm going to make a motion on this. I would move that, and again, this is not because we don't think this is an important cause for YSS. We did a good job with this. It's just what our statutory authority is right now, plus the timing. And because of that, I would move that we deny YSS, YSS's request to carry over $50,000 to FY23.
I second that. Seconded, any further discussion? No, I just, you know, it's too bad that the state would take some of that authority from local government to make those important decisions. And it's a big issue. You had a big conversation yesterday in the meeting that I had. Certainly, it's a safe advice and looking at an important issue. It's just an issue that we don't think the county can fund anymore.
And I know that CICS is working towards children's services and I hope that that, that, I hope that those quicker than some other things have been able to happen and think we got CICS. But in terms of the goals from the state, everything that's going on there, you know, I hope that they fully get onto this quickly and we have some services to develop.
Yeah. Great. Okay. Hi. Basil, hi. Thank you. Our next, we have discussion and consideration of requests to provide space in the HSC building to Iowa Workforce Development.
And this is an item that Joby and I are bringing forward. It was brought to our attention that Iowa Workforce Development was going to be seeking space in Ames soon. And we showed the Rouse, the Division Administrator, American Job Centers from IWD showed her space in the Human Service Building. It's room 217, same suite as Boost and the multipurpose center. She expressed a desire to use that space. And if the board approves the request, we will work behind the scenes to work with them to move in in August.
Yep, and the space is, with that area, you come in the hallway door and where you make that jog going with multipurpose room, there's a door there that currently has a yellow sign that directs you over to the Boost Office. It's that room. It's 185 square foot. Room was formerly the conference room and community services was up on that floor. Currently, we store, that's the magic room that's got overflow furniture there, right? And it's one we've been working on clearing out, you know? So, I think it's a better use of space for that area than to have a nice room that would be an office making it storage.
So. Just a little bit there. So, when you go through that door off the hallway, and then there's a small little conference room, and then to the left, there's two other offices. Is it one of those offices?
No. Like, when you come in from the hallway and then there's the jog, and if you went full left, there's an office that's currently got some county attorney staff in it, Ed Grant. But no, it's right with that transition. On the right is the family room for the Department of Human Services, and there's a door that's always closed, and it's got the yellow sign on it with the arrow that says Boost ECI is down that way. It's that room. So, basically, if you were in conference room east and you turned and looked south, and the other side of that wall would be the room.
Okay. Not conference room east.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That gets.
But they will have access to the conference rooms. You can use. That'll be true to them.
Yep.
My only question would be, is there already electricity and?
Yeah, it's fully, yeah, and their needs are just the space. They don't have need for phones. We discussed that because they use cell phones in their operation, and they felt the guest Wi-Fi would accommodate any things they would have. So, yeah, it's fully finished. It's carpeted. It's a finished space. We just used it as a catch-all, basically, so.
Space being provided at no cost.
Actually, that's a slight change.
Yeah. I spoke with County Attorney's Office and, because we had discussed whether we do like a traditional, like lease versus like an MOU, but Ethan felt to protect both the tenant and us as a landlord, a traditional lease with like, like we do similarly with what we do with Mary Greeley Medical Center, dollar per term. Because of that way, we can make sure that they have sufficient property insurance and then plus it gets some tenant rights.
And we haven't yet gotten to the point where space needs study, that we know what's going to happen with all of that space eventually.
Correct.
They understand that there may be some moving around.
We didn't get that deep into that because I, you know, personally, I felt, because right now, they're looking at trying this for six months to see what, if it fits, you know, because right now, they're just looking at most two days a week, somebody would be utilizing the space. So, I didn't feel it was, to get that deep into it with the timing. So, I think in the, in the long term, looking at the space needs assessment, I feel that we could accommodate if this became a permanent home for this operation, that there, we could accommodate that space with kind of the overall plan, so. Yeah.
She does, I expect to share it with partners, and she might be connected. I tried to look to see if I saw her name listed. There's some telephone that was on there. I'm not familiar with, but.
Yeah, you can see Sandra kind of listed the other partners to potentially be using it. But with that, it's, they're looking at three staff members, but still a person being there two days a week to start with.
Is there, is there anyone from Iowa Workforce Development on the line that wanted to make a comment? So, you can raise your hand. Well, I just want to say thank you because it was a pretty frantic phone call that I got from the chamber saying, this is happening, and we need a place for Iowa workforce to go, or we're losing them. You know, or whatever they were going to be able to work out with the Ames Library. And both of you just kind of launched into action mode and found an answer really quickly. Yeah, and I've gotten someone from the city who contacted me, and I emailed Joby right away and said, hey, I want to see where you're going to get a phone call on this.
Joby was already ready with the space.
I think it's a good fit for that location.
Yeah.
The relationships that they would have with the other entities that are currently in the building, I think, would be kind of that one-stop-shop kind of situation, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Man, it's been great. They've been using the library. There's a lot more privacy.
Yeah.
Confidentiality.
Right. So, I could make the motion to approve the space in the HFC building to Iowa Workforce Development for $1, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So. Can second it. Any further discussion? Hi. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to discussion and consideration of classification and compensation study, final report and implementation. Still morning.
Goodness, good morning. I always have to look.
Good morning, board.
Good morning. All right, so we are at the end of our compensation study, compensation and classification study. And we use, just to kind of recap the process, we contracted with Condry and Associates to provide this. They did a complete update to our pay plan. They did revisions to job descriptions. They did a number of employee and department head and elected official interviews. And they said that was wonderful, they, they said we have great employees, they really enjoyed that process, so I did wanna, did wanna note that. So it's a fairly short report, shortened to the point. I'm not gonna go through all of it, it has been on the agenda, I do want to note that. I went through and did all the calculations again, just to verify, you know, they gave me the data, there were a couple issues. So it did change the implementation cost very, very small. So I do have new updated copies. Like I said, it total implication costs, we're talking just a few thousand dollars either way on those two plans, so nothing that would change or, or really need to. Have consideration as far as implementation costs, but I do want to, I'll put that. When I attach it and get it out there and, and I'll give Shelley a copy for, for the records that those, they did make those couple changes. There were two employees that they just had placed on the wrong steps, so they did get that changed. I don't know.
And then that, that would actually, the corrected ones would be in there.
Yes, yeah, yes, so, and you could have, I brought everybody a copy, nothing else changed, I didn't know if you wanted to confuse.
What's the dollar?
So. Yep, it's page nine, so implementation of Plan A, here, I'm just gonna give you. So reading all of it, again, it was very minor, but the percentages did change just a little bit. Sure, don't trip over it now.
Instead of.
I'm not, I'm not good about going over that, but yeah. And I, I did want to check, you know, it took me a little bit of time to go through that many employees, but, and I think it's important to make sure they. We've had all that. I do want to note too that we've had some resignations, so even though. You know, it, things have changed a little bit, so those positions and those employees were included. Obviously, we haven't filled some of the positions, so.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Maybe for the record, Plan A has gone down from forty-six to sixty-three to four forty-nine. Three, three.
Correct.
B's down from three eighty-three, one thirty-eight to three seventy-eight, four four three.
Yep, that's correct.
Again, that's the only difference.
Yeah.
Than the one from one that's on the agenda, so I thought I might just, we need to make sure it was on there.
Correct. So just to go over a little bit for those that are listening to this meeting, Condery and Associates did provide two pay plan options. So they did their market survey and they surveyed thirty-seven positions, the contract was up to forty, they weren't gonna do all of them, but it was a good. Good sample, they sent the survey out to twenty entities, we received eighteen responses, which I think is great. It is, it's a lot of work to fill out a salary survey when you receive them, it takes a lot of time. So I do appreciate that those eighteen entities submitted their data to Condery and Associates, so. They did two proposed scales. One at market, which is table B, or what they consider market, and then table A is slightly above market. And they would have moved everything up about five percent, so. There are sixteen steps in each pay plan. Those steps are set at two and a half percent increases. So, so roughly a forty-five percent spread, and that's all noted in the, in the report. From them. A couple of things I do want to point out too is when they're looking at implementation, we take employees' salaries as of July first. So we, we took their new, their new FY twenty-three salaries, that includes longevity, base pay and any supplemental pay. So we took that annual amount and that's how Condery and Associates placed them on the new scale. We didn't back out longevity, we didn't back out any supplemental pay, we gave them credit for everything they're getting paid for right now. Now, moving forward, they do recommend that we don't have the separate longevity, they built that into the plan. Our steps are two and a half percent and they recommend, you know, once after the implementation year, then we move into moving employees up. A step on their anniversary date. So those are just a couple of things that I did want to notice. And so we're not taking the longevity that any employee had built up to this point, we've left it in their salary and placed them on the new scale. The. I know they have footnotes for the, what they consider the longevity or the equity piece, that would be based on years of service at the county, not years in the position. So they're really focused on since, since it technically is kind of their longevity move, it's years of service, not years in the position. So how they formulated these two longevity adjustments, if somebody has been with the county. As of June, July first of twenty twenty-two, one to three years, they, they, their longevity would be an additional step. So we would place them at the closest but higher paying step. And then they would get an additional step, which would be an additional two and a half percent. If they've been here at least four years, then they get another step, which is an additional two and a half, so it'd be five percent above. Their placement percentage, so. That's, that's what's figured into the. Equity or implementation, equity implementation cost.
And just for clarification, the last time we did a study like this was what about?
We did a full.
Full one?
Full one back in, I think we finished it in twenty twelve. And we did not do any longevity or equity piece, they, they, they put the scale in place and those that fell below minimum, we brought up to minimum. Those that were within the range just kind of stayed within the range and those that were above the range, we just red circled them, which is pretty typical when you do a. Comp update, so.
But when you do that, you can end up with somebody who's been here a few years not getting in their life and somebody who just started.
Correct, if you don't do any equity.
What they call longevity adjustment in on page nines, it's not our current longevity kind of things, it's basically that equity piece you're talking about. The credit for, okay, people who have been at first. Then these ranges will go, will bump up a little bit so they're not.
Sure, we don't want to, when you implement a new plan, if you don't do that, that longevity or what they consider an equity piece. You're gonna have compression, so you won't have any, any difference in somebody that's been here, you know, say five years versus somebody that just started.
Right.
Could be started three weeks ago, specifically if their, their salary falls below the minimum. So that's why they do recommend every time you do this, there is some movement. And, and they use the one to three and over four years as their, their two steps that they recommend.
And how many steps does a print scale have?
Um, it's been, we have ten for, we have, we have kind of a mix, so our step scale has ten and there are two percent steps. Our other. Compensation schedule is just open range, there's no steps. So. So they do recommend having everybody, you know, looking at this and, and trying to get individuals to move through the, the ranges, that forty-five percent range. They do recommend the steps and we're seeing more. Counties go to that step system versus just an open range. Plan, so. Couple of things to keep, keep in mind too, when you implement, typically you implement, you move everybody with the equity piece, everything, and then we kind of. That's their salary for the fiscal year, so there isn't additional step movements during that implementation year. Everything would start back up next July of twenty-three is when we would start making step movements moving forward. So we would do everything upfront at whatever implementation date that the board wants to choose. We wouldn't make employees wait until their anniversary date to move to their equity piece or longevity piece if that's approved. We would do everything all at once and then next fiscal year is when the anniversary step increases would, would take place.
So just for clarification, even though there won't be a step movement on, so someone whose anniversary is in October and traditionally would get. Or even December would get that increase in that month. We're doing, we would be doing everything now. What that means is on the anniversary, there would not be another movement, but they would be getting that movement several months in advance.
Essentially, yeah, I mean, we do, we did have to look at a, at a date to do the longevity piece in July, you know. July, June thirtieth is the cutoff, I mean, you just can't keep going forward. And one of the reasons that they recommend when you do implement that plan year, there isn't some additional, is the cost of implementation. There, there is, especially if you approve the longevity piece, there is a. There, there's a cost associated with it, so for budgeting and different pieces like that, you're, you're making that and then next year is when we start those improvements. Yeah.
I've been through many classifications that before and what I know is there's no way to get a system. That everybody thinks is totally fair to everybody, because the steps occur during the year, but the way this is gonna be set up, everybody will get. So the increase when we implement, when you're in the beginning of the fiscal year and we'll get it for the whole year. Which is gonna benefit some people more than other people. That will always happen when you, when you, when you go to a new classification system, if you're gonna, or any compensation system, it's. It's gonna look like somebody got a better deal than somebody else and I've never seen how you can get one where. You know, it's just the reality. I think this, I think the equity piece is good. I think that it does, it does help, you know, one thing I've always heard is, well, everybody went up into this new scale and I've been here three years. And somebody who just came in last week, I'm making the same money as now, you know. You can't do it all the way through because it's prohibitively expensive, but you can do it, you know, to this point, I think, I think what they, what they've. Have suggested here is reasonable.
Got some really good data information. It's not a fifty-page report, a hundred-page report, a small report, but very specific. I know what we. Got the information, I was expecting to think, oh my God, I'm gonna be reading this document, you know, per week's timeframe.
Where consultants are reporting, it's at a hundred pages plus.
Yeah, I did, I really appreciated and all the information that they were able to receive for us to make a decision.
Yeah, I like there, I've seen other reports that are thirty, forty pages long, and it's a lot of good information, but you kind of get lost in.
Yeah.
And, and some of that information is above, you know, my pay grade, it's just, it's hard to, unless you're a compensation specialist, you don't understand.
We don't need an intellectual exercise.
And they were, they were a great company to work with, very responsive. Again, when I, when I found there were a couple errors, they were, they were quick to fix that and. And got that right back to me, so.
So the difference between Plan A and Plan B.
Plan A and Plan B, sure, so Plan B, B is what they consider, what they would call market. Now, they factor a lot of things into market, so they do the salary survey for each, each different position. And then they also did a, they have their factor scoring, so how they fit, fit all that, so they developed this pay plan. And then how do they fit all of our positions, because we have a lot of classifications on that pay plan. So they not only look at market data, they look at their, their factoring system, which is what we had before, so there's always a grading system. To that, so they, they, they did that and then they kind of look and, and does it make sense, you know, different things like that. So once they got all to the end, they looked at, okay, what would they consider to be market? And then they did a little, what they consider slightly above market, so they took everything up five percent. Now, I will say market is changing almost, you know, daily, it's, it's an interesting. It's interesting out there what's changing, so, you know, you could do a study six, six months from now and there could be different, different data, different market rates, so.
So is it possible that some of these jurisdictions that they compare this to are doing their own best patient studies right now?
You know.
And, and actually, these numbers might be higher.
They, they, they really, very well could be, and, and we, as, as our. My colleagues and I talk, it's like we're always, we're doing studies and we move and then they do studies and they move and then we, then we're, you know. So we really are, all the government agencies are really competing against each other and kind of take our actions after that. So that's why we do this every so many, I mean, they recommend three to four years, my rule of thumb is five, at least do a. Some type of a market update and adjustment. Now, we do move the scales every year, moving forward, if a step scale like this is adopted, it will move with whatever the cost of living is approved each year. So we will continue to move those up every year until we do a another full.
Right.
Study in however many years, so.
Ten of the eighteen respondents are basically in, in Story County as well, or adjacent to Story County.
Yeah, yeah, we, we don't just look at counties, you know, there are different things that we do for different situations for compensation. But when we do a salary survey, we don't only want to incorporate counties, because we're not only losing employees to county, so we do look at. Other agencies, government agencies around, so cities, City of Ames, there's. City of Urbendale and Canadian we've included, we do include the state of Iowa because there's a lot of overlap there too, we do lose some. Specifically the attorney, DOT, the Attorney General's Office. And then Iowa State University, we do, there's some comparisons, we don't have as many probably comparable positions with Iowa State as we do with other. Specifically counties, there's a lot of like, like positions, cities, it gets a little bit less, but Iowa State's probably the least. As far as the number of positions that they have just like us, but we do take their data into consideration, so. I do want to thank the board too to allow a company to, you know, a consultant to come in and do this, this isn't something we can. This big of a survey and, and comp plan restructure isn't something we could handle internally and it's good to have an outside.
Yeah, even if you could handle it.
It's preferred to have an outside.
Yeah, we, we need to have someone who's, who's analyzing information and making recommendations, not based on any emotion or knowing one. Person and that person, it needs to be just based on.
And it is, it's based on data, based on job duties, and that's why they did a lot of interviews, because they wanted a good idea of what. Positions actually did and they wanted to hear from both employees and their supervisors, so.
That was one question about the proposal.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just, I mean, really, they need to, you know, it's not a desk spot, it's not a desk site. And it really is important, you can read all the documents, but you start talking to people, that's when you get the good information, so I'm, I'm just.
Glad they did that and I appreciate employees, you know, taking the time to talk to them too, so.
Yeah, I'm glad they provided two different. Plans that we could look at.
That doesn't always happen, usually, like last time when we did this with Springstead, it was one plan. Yeah, so.
I, I think it's important that we consider where, where we're going to be in a year from now, or two years from now. And how we. How we attract good employees, qualified employees and how we hold on to those qualified. Awesome employees that we have already.
And that's. There's just a couple of things that I've seen recently that I've concerned, one is you gave me statistics on the number of employees by calendar year. That we had resigning and retiring in twenty twenty-one was a very high number, it was thirty-four. I think the highest for that was twenty-five in twenty sixteen, but it's usually below twenty or below. And also how long it's taken to get some positions filled and not getting a whole lot of applicants. Services that we provide, kind of provides the straight line residents are only as good as the staff that we are able to have here and. To do that, experience and we need to keep, we need to retrain, retain staff we have, we need to, we need to. Recruit people, we'd have a good job pool, so. I would normally be for Plan B, say market, that's right where we are, you know, that's how I've done this stuff all my life. But I'm looking at the times right now, trends we've had, looking at inflation, looking at those issues and. We need to keep the right quality of services and that's true having a quality workforce, so I'm, I'm prepared to back Plan A. Five percent above market is not a huge thing and it just don't, I mean, that probably these other people who are in these other agencies or these other counties and cities that are in this. They're probably doing some best, you know, some compensation studies right now too and they're probably gonna. With that motion, I would move that we adopt Plan A, but first wait.
Sure.
Possibly the management.
I have been running numbers, I'm. I'm prepared to, the next start of the pay period would be July third.
Starting July third.
July third, so they would essentially get their cost of living on the first paycheck in July. And this could go into effect the second paycheck, so I, now it's a lot of work between now and Thursday at three and yes, I will make. Now, it's a lot of work between now and Thursday at 3:00, and yes, I will make the agenda deadline, so.
This is kind of.
Melissa, we have to change them all down.
I know, I'm sorry, you're going to have to change them at some point. Get it done with, I'm sorry. I know, it's a lot of work for payroll, we couldn't quite have it in one, have it all effective 6:19. I'm sorry, but, but.
It was hyperventilating, wasn't it?
So you could. Sorry.
So you want to implement.
You can implement it.
When the pay rule starts starting July 3rd, okay.
What I would do is I would, I have, I have checked and double-checked the figures. Sorry, Lisa.
There's another public comment, so feel free to come up here.
Understand where I'm coming from, I'm not coming from, I'm just like, oh my God.
I know. But what, what that would take, would I need, I need to get a resolution prepared, get it on the board's agenda for next Tuesday. I have some preliminary stuff I've been working, not knowing which, which plan or different things. So I did everything with both plans. I will have a spreadsheet that I can send out to departments and offices to let them know where their employees will, will land with, if, if whatever is approved. And I've got that started. I have, obviously, the next item is the compensation policy. I've updated that, I've got that on the board agenda. So it is, we can make it effective 7:03. I don't want you to wait to, since we, since we drew the line on June 30th.
Right.
As the, the, you know, the longevity piece, I don't, I would recommend that the board not wait very long to implement this.
Right, because we have anniversary dates, beginning of July.
Correct, so. So, sorry Lisa, I'm going to apologize again, I know how much work it is to change everything. So, I've done that before, a few times, so.
She hasn't.
She hasn't. So.
So let me draw a motion again.
Can I have you add that the rest of it will be frozen, that this will just be the movement, something in the movement, something in the motion that there will be no additional steps? If it's.
For FY.
23, they will start for FY 24, yep.
I think I can get all that in motion.
Okay.
But do I need to, does this motion have to be for staff to prepare a resolution or just to do?
No, just to implement this, I will go, I know that it takes, I'm not, I'm not doing individual employee action forms. I'm doing a one-page resolution, so.
Okay, so then, I would move that we accept the compensation compensation studies recommendation for Plan A or, and implement the new pay ranges and moving employees to that plan effective payroll beginning July 3rd. And also that steps will be frozen for FY 23 and resume in FY 24.
And that will including the longevity adjustment also.
Oh, and including the longevity adjustment on Plan A.
Let's make sure there's nothing else. Any further discussion? No, okay, Merkin.
Hi.
And I, Basil, hi.
Thank you, board. Just one thing to note, since this, this study does encompass longevity, I am going to bring back next Tuesday the longevity schedule. So it's applicable to, we have two bargaining unit employees that utilize that. And also our deputies and our reporter, auditor, treasurer, and the sheriff that will continue to receive that longevity piece, since they're not, their salaries are tied to the elected official, not this. So I don't want the longevity to go away or not continue to go for those individuals, so I'll bring that back next week.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. There's a lot of pieces to this.
So, moving into discussion and consideration of revised classification and compensation policy.
Correct. So with the new pay plan, there will be some changes to our current classification and compensation policy. I'm just going to briefly go through those. They will, off the, the discussion of the classification plan of what it is, that's directly out of their report. So how they factor their factor system and different things like that, I changed that. That was from our previous consultant, when Springstead did it, now I updated that information. So we will just have, instead of having a step system and an open range system, we will just have one plan. So it will simplify things tremendously, in my opinion. I put it in there, there's 27 grades, 16 steps each grade. Note that the, the study and implementation, their, their scales are annual. I will have something that breaks that down. We don't pay people with an annual salary, we pay them with bi-weekly or hourly. So I'm still figuring out, I've got to do those calculations, so. The ranges will be adjusted on the first day of the fiscal year with the cost of living. So we talked about that a little bit when you were doing that. A change to the entrance wage or salary. Our previous policy said to step three, that was on the old step, 10-step system. I have, I have updated it to up to salary step H, which would be midpoint within that range or as close as I can get to midpoint, since it's not a odd number of steps. So step H, and then there is a exception process. If, and, and I included a form in the back that, that a department head or elected official could submit to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration if they want to hire somebody at, higher than step H. I also included in there, because our compensation policy does cover the secondary roads and also the, the conservation, if, if they update or adopt this. I changed that from step three to step five, to give a little more room to their midpoint. So I also did make that change in this revised draft. I did put in there that they do have to take into consideration internal equity, the incumbents within those classifications, so. And we work with the departments on that. Under pay increases, we still have, leaving in there are the across-the-board or cost of living increases. They are eligible, affected the first day of the fiscal year, regardless of how long they've spent with the county. So as long as they're on payroll prior to the effective date, they do receive that cost of living. We don't prorate if somebody starts in January or June 1st or May, whatever, they get the full cost of living. Step increases, you know, for FY 24, step increases will, we will adjust pay on their anniversary date. It is still tied to their annual performance, so they can't be on a performance improvement plan or have, their performance can't be below standards and still receive that step. That's how we've had it in the past. So the same thing, it's not tied to a score on the evaluation. It would be just if that employee has, is having some performance deficiencies and they get a below standards rating, they are not eligible on their anniversary date. If at the six-month mark, they, their, their performance has been approved, improved, then they would be eligible for that step for the remainder, remaining six months of their anniversary year. Yeah. Other than that, it's pretty much, there wasn't a lot changed. Other than I did clarify throughout this policy that we have a 27-grade plan with 16 steps. Transfers, transfers are, if somebody's transferred from one position to another within the same pay grade, so if they're in a 14, they transfer to a 14, they stay with that, that pay that they were already receiving. If they get promoted, they go to the closest but higher paying step. And then if, if that's not, you know, because that would be essentially a two and a half percent increase. If that's not sufficient to the department head or elected official, they can, they can fill out that form, that exception form and request them to be moved to a different step. And they just need to quantify or justify exactly why, what, what, sure, what do we need to do? It is really difficult, because, you know, if you're going from a grade 12 to a grade 22, that's a lot bigger increase to go there than you are if you're going from a 10 to an 11 or an 11 to 13. So I think by having that exception piece in the policy, that they can submit that and justify that, that should help kind of take care of the instances where we only have just a little. If they're going into a new position, the increase isn't as much as what, what should be, what it should be, so. You know, if it's a demotion, we just place them at the closest, that's what we currently have, the closest. It might be a reduction in pay, it just really depends what the situation is. So if they, if they went into a department head role or a management role and they're going back into their original plan, there's going to be a reduction in pay for that, so. Acting or interim department head, it was a little, little tricky since there's steps. I just put in there that they will be placed on a step in that department head pay grade that is closest to the 5%. So, and then supplemental pay is no longer, that was all figured in. They kept their supplemental pay, and then those positions do have like a senior level position. So we kind of worked, worked that out a little bit through that process. And I think the departments talked to the consultants about that, when they have, you know, individuals in the same classification but doing a little bit different or higher level work, maybe that the rest of them aren't putting them into that senior classification. So we do have a few positions that have those, those next steps or whatever, higher grades for that, so I did remove that. I don't know if there's any comments. This does go out for seven-day review, and then it will be back on next Tuesday's agenda for final approval. If that's, that's our normal process, that way we can get comments to see what the, if the changes are, are, are going to work or what, what individual department heads and elected officials think, yeah.
I'm, I'm glad that you included that form.
Form, yeah, yeah, and we, yeah, that way it's not just a letter from the department, it's an actual form. And it's, and it's within, yeah. I took our merit form, since there is no merit now, I just adapted it to an exception form, so. So we'll see if that works, so.
Questions on your team's motion? I have received approval of revised classification and compensation policy and put it up for seven-day review. Second, and seconded in further discussion.
Thank you.
Yes. Last, or next is discussion and consideration of revised holiday policy, adding MLK Junior Day for seven-day review.
So I bet, there, there's been some requests and discussion of our holiday policy, what, what holidays are. So I just put mainly put this on the board's agenda, and Martin Luther King Jr. Day is the most, has been the most talked about over, I've been in my role probably 11, 11 years. So I know it's been asked, you know, why don't we have that different thing? So I just put it on the board's agenda, so you can have a discussion of adding that or any other ideas that the board has. So I'll just let you have that discussion, if that works.
Yeah, I appreciate being on the agenda, I was kind of surprised that it wasn't a holiday, I know coming from the state, but they did have a, okay, June Day. I know, I, I spoke with, I've spoken with you a number of times about this. And I would like to suggest that we also, or alternatively, that we consider Juneteenth as the holiday, if we're adding a holiday that we had, Juneteenth. And just talk about what your thoughts are on that versus.
This is adding a holiday. Where I saw the state of Iowa do some, get, not have President's Day and make a change. I would, I would have problems with adding two holidays. And I, when I first got on the board, I also said, we really don't have Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And I said, you know, I've said many times since, and we should really recognize that. I, I have concerns about adding two holidays. I, and I know we have some union contracts. I guess I would prefer to say it's changing President's Day. Or another, like, an additional holiday if we're protesting.
Just for clarification, I wasn't suggesting that we do both, I was just suggesting that, that we just do one. Yeah, because if we, if we, if we start talking about swapping, that's going to have an impact on our unions. And I don't want to create, create.
If we swap, we'd have different holidays for unions versus the non-union staff.
That's right.
Right, as, as every, as the contracts read right now, so.
Right, yeah, but you don't think that they would be going to exchange there?
I have never, at this point, their contracts aren't open. So they don't have to, I mean, I could reach out, I don't.
Or it's something that can be discussed in the next bargaining period too, which is.
We've got another year, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think talking about bargaining. I was really glad that we participated in the Juneteenth with the city and other units of government this year, I thought that was great. And I'm certainly wanting to support that, but just getting, I don't know, I guess I see MLK Junior Day is the day that most organizations, or most agencies, units of government have traditionally had on their list and have a lot of things going on around that. We participated in, with the city and with other units of government in the MLK Day celebrations. So I, I guess I have a preference there, just because of that.
You know, it's a hard one to choose between the two. It's almost like that's not fair. Right, both very important days. Yeah, I, I kind of lean towards the MLK, mainly this, that's what all, not all, but many others already recognize that. Their activities take place on that Monday, they're kind of that day of service. And, you know, recognizing that, that's where I kind of lean towards that. But just by knowing, to finish my thoughts of saying, we should also be recognizing Juneteenth and, you know, moving that to holiday, whether you do two in one year or you say, let's do one this year. And then, look, look, bring it back to look at implementing another one next year. And that might give us the time to just reach out, not that they swap, that's not what I'm saying. But would that be something that the unions would be open to saying, instead of President's Day during this day? Or do we just say, no, we want to add another, another holiday? So if I could just argue with my case here, not argue, but present my case for Juneteenth. I did look at other counties similar to our size. Land County recognizes both, Johnson County recognizes both. Polk County recognizes MLK. Dallas does neither, but they have a floating holiday. Black Hawk does neither, but they can swap, there's an option to swap MLK and President's Day for one another. They all have 11 or 12 holidays, we have 10. My thoughts on Juneteenth versus MLK Day are really. So I, I think if we say MLK Day is the, the, what we hear the most about or have heard the most about over all these years, I, I think there's, I think there's a big segment of our population that didn't even know what Juneteenth was until recently. I think both are incredibly valuable days, and it's not a, it's not a, whatever, it's not a judgment column, which is more important than the other. My thoughts on Juneteenth is, it's a recognition and celebration of the emancipation of millions of enslaved people. And MLK Day is a recognition of a great man and great things that happened. And MLK Day is a recognition of a great man and great things that happened. Both equally great, but I feel like this is more a recognition of, of the man and his work, fantastic work. But if, if I, if I'm in a position where I need to choose or argue a day, I, I'm going to argue for Juneteenth. I think what we're going to see is more and more celebration around this day. I think we're going to see more events like we had Saturday. I know there are lots of events around MLK Day and we've been participating in those thus far, some of those. So that would be my, my argument for.
And I think that's, I think it's a very good argument, and I agree with you, so it's like trying to choose, it's, it's kind of difficult. But can I go back and ask the question?
Certainly.
You said with, with the addition of one of these, we'll have 11. Correct, we have 10 now, we will have 11.
Right.
Did you say Lynn and Johnson each have how many?
Lynn has 12, Johnson has 11 plus one floater, Polk has 11. Dallas has 11 plus one floater, Black Hawk has 11. I think the floater is part of the 11.
We're seeing most between 11 and 12 on counties. Cities are a little different, it's, yeah, it depends, some have, some have nine, some have 11, some, I mean, it's, it's, there's more from what I've seen. And it's been a little bit since I've done that, that study. But yeah, counties, a lot of them have had floating holidays for a long time, that's something that we've never. Holiday pay, personal days in the contracts. Yeah, there, there is a budget impact, I mean, you can't add a holiday without, you know, having that. Our, our sheriff's contracts, they get personal days, those that are on 6-3 schedule, so they would get an additional, you know, their contract says if the board recognizes another holiday, they also, I didn't bring that specific language, but in turn, if you recognize when they, they get it too. They have that clause in there. They would receive that additional personal day, some use it like vacations, otherwise it's paid out at the end of a fiscal year. So there could be a budget impact.
So it's to pay it under overtime.
Yeah, because somebody else took it off, so I mean, there is, yeah. And, and then you think of other, other positions within the county, you know. In January, there could be a snowstorm, in June, there could be a flood. So you might have staff that are called out on that holiday, just like any other holiday that we have, so. So there could indeed be a budget impact, it's hard to know how much. It doesn't matter what time of the year you have a holiday, there could be any, anything, so.
I, I think it's also worth noting that there, there are two that I, that I came across, I didn't check every single county. But I found two counties that currently recognize Juneteenth as a county holiday. And I think, I think by us also recognizing Juneteenth as a county holiday, I think we're sending an important message. I think we are sending a message that we are welcoming community. And that we are that we're willing to put our money where our mouth is essentially. And be one of the, one of the leaders.
It's not an easy decision either.
Yeah, it's not a decision we have to make today.
No, no, there, we can.
I, I'm, I'm more interested, I, I think I'm very interested in the swing path. How that if you've got.
We can go back and look, yeah.
You have to make some assumptions, I know people will do it on extra day, I understand that. But I just can't think there's you know, I, I am for adding MLK Junior Day. I would like to see what the impact could be about adding another additional day and you're, you're just saying one and you choose between those two days. And that's my concern because so many, so many of the other government entities we deal with have MLK Junior Day and have had it for a very long time. We've, we've participated in services of that, since I've been on the board and I'm sure way before that. It just seems to me that it's the logical one because we, because of all of that to add. I understand about Juneteenth, that that was a great celebration, I think it's going to continue. I just, I guess at this point, I don't think we should add two holidays. I'm thinking that.
I, I, I don't think we should add two holidays yet, but. We'd like this brought back next weekend where we can see financially impact or, or maybe decisions. And I'm only asking based on your.
If we're. Not add two holidays. I don't know what additional information, if we're, if we're saying one holiday, I don't know that just one pack is going to change for mine, I was thinking just one pack.
For two, okay.
I think you can also consider where that holiday falls in the calendar.
I, I don't either, but I, I did have a conversation with the former supervisor and that was the first thing that former supervisor said was, well, in the calendar? And like, that is such a supervisor answer.
And I remember discussions about that when MLK Junior Day came off and was kind of saying, oh yeah, wouldn't it be a little neater and cleaner if it balanced in a year if it were in a different month, but it's not. It's not, it's celebrated on his, on Dr. King's birthday, so. Well, I can make a motion and see where it goes, so. I would move approval of the proposed holiday. Revised holiday policy adding MLK Junior Day for seven day review.
So for seven day review, does that mean comments come back from employees, look at the comments from employees and a decision based on those potentially?
Well, we take that into consideration.
Like any other, we always send it out to get feedback.
That might be, that might be also true.
Yeah, I do send it out to department heads and all the officials and then they, typically that's the process and then they send it to.
Anybody who's looking at where does it fall, Juneteenth is pretty close to Black Hawk. Steph's King, King Junior Day is pretty close to Black Hawk, so. Yeah, I don't think, I think that's. I, I understand that I can do that.
Fine, and I, basically, I.
So I'll send it out and then I will join next Tuesday's meeting via Zoom since I will be at a conference. And then we can have that. The tricky part too is I also have the handbook. So I'll make the handbook with changes as the draft and then if things change, we'll have to change that at next. I'll have that as an additional item next Tuesday after the comp in the holiday policy. And then if there's changes, we'll make those noted changes and then I'll update the handbook and get it out. We're, we're cutting it, I don't usually cut it quite this close to July 1st, but the study kind of put me in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I like to have the handbook approved prior to July 1st with any changes. Yeah, and then we can change stuff later on. Yes, that's okay.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have nothing for departmental reports, other reports, any upcoming agenda items? Now it's time to public comment, number two, comments from the public, items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings laws, but maybe so in the future, anyone who would like to make public comments? Step forward.
Hello, this is a quick one. Just to figure, this is appropriate setting, just to bring it up. I did get all the space needs assessment review done, kicked it back to OPM and asked them if they were going to, they're going to put that into their final report and asked them if they had planned on presenting that in a presentation with three of you in a public setting. Their intention is to just to provide a digital document that is their final presentation, so I just want to make you all three aware of that. Because that is outside their scope, they claim that the final report being delivered in a public setting in person is outside of their scope of the contract we have with them, which is fine. From what I've seen, it has all the information we need and then so we will probably still have a work session with all of us in a public setting to go over that final report, so I just figured I'd mention that since I was here and I just found that out.
So.
Yes.
So with the, with the work session.
Yes.
If, if we do have additional questions, are they available to answer?
Probably, you know, I think a lot of them, I feel I can answer myself, so. But if there is some that we come out of, but I'm sure that we could reach out to them. Yes. Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's been a long one.
Anyone else who'd like to make public comments, if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand or star seven if you're on the phone. Seeing no one, we will close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments committee meeting updates and comments from supervisors.
But this afternoon I have a, a meeting on the housing action plan, continuing to work on that. Tomorrow we have the fire drill, 10 a.m., so everybody should check their workbook and find out where you're supposed to meet when there's a fire drill, so they'll go to the right place. Community service staff, we'll be meeting with them, I think we did 11 o'clock. As the ones who are transitioning to CICS employment at Franklin County as, well, they are CICS, Franklin County is their in the afternoon, I have an audit entrance conference with, with Storycom board, I'm sharing Storycom now. So I will be involved in, in that, I think some interview. And tomorrow night, the emergency management commission executive committee has a brief meeting and it's some of the special meeting of the commission. And we will be dealing with the, the executive committee's recommendation for a new. Yes. Thursday, Food Fest. On my calendar and I'll be taking the afternoon off to get a new freezer.
That's not fun.
No, no, everybody's heard about 26-year-old man I gave out. Friday morning, second judicial district department professional services meets in Webster City. I also, that's members meeting sharing that board, I know a little bit about the agency though, looking forward to that. And Monday. That's it for what I'll be doing this week.
So I have a meeting this afternoon, tomorrow is thing that supervisor Mark mentioned, the fire drill and CICS, I do have a meeting with Micah. Eric Crawford meeting next week. Thursday I will be out all day, but I'll be down in Ankeny at the Judicial Men and Health Summit.
Oh, is that in person?
That's in person.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, yeah, so that starts at nine, goes till 4:30.
Are you going to be at the home base by, or breakfast?
No, because I'll be down at that. Yeah, I'll be at that, I actually heard a meeting that morning as well. I think they're going to try to move that earlier because there are several supervisors that are not available for that next morning, so I don't have a quorum to do. Carla already knows I won't be at the CICS meeting as well, as Russell won't be there, as I said as well. Friday I will be out. Retiring from work and retirement celebration. My calendar does show a Port House Security meeting that Friday, and that's actually going to be changed to in July. Just for you needed to make a change on that, so that is. Monday I have my calendars, my upwork meeting. It's my later week.
This afternoon, there's a NACO Central Region meeting at 1:15. And then I have Story County Housing Trust meeting at 2:00 and then Serhat tonight at 6:00. And then the fire drill, CICS. I will be at Homebase Iowa Thursday morning and then we have Food Fest Thursday night, I have CFR board meeting. And then, I don't know if you are aware of this, there's a, an OCIO and Future Broadband Investments webinar that I thought for sure you.
Is that fully eligible as data to eat, get my something JA funding applications a boost?
No.
Yeah.
No, I can't make that because it's in the morning and I'm corrections board, but he said that they were going to, are you going to be able to attend it? He said they were going to order, he did that.
Oh, great, great. And then Monday is my mom's birthday, but I'll be. Anything further?
I was just adding, the board of health is having a special meeting on Friday. At their last meeting, they inadvertently had two contracts that's the same on their agenda, so they need to approve the other contracts, or they're not special meeting, they will probably add on to their meeting as well, actions that we took today in regards to the compensation holiday, so the best, but they don't have to then another special meeting. I'm going to assume then that the contract that gets approved at the meeting on Friday will then need to be on the agenda on Tuesday. So just to make you aware of that. With that, I make the motion to adjourn.
Seconded, heading.
I, Markan.
Basil, I, thank you.